Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular session of the City of Saginaw Council. We will be led today in the prayer and pledge by Mayor Protam Brenda Moore.
Those that want to participate, please. Grace heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking you to strengthen us as we make the decisions that we need to make throughout our city and throughout this session. Father, we ask that you watch over all of our workers, our leaders, and those in the community. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Protam Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have eight members present.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please refrain from being noisy and from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this would be a good time to remind everyone, including councilmembers here, to please turn off or silence all your electronic devices. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no special announcements tonight, but we do have a proclamation on our agenda.
We do.
And it's honoring the life and service of former Mayor Gregory L. Branch.
Thank you. It would be my honor to read the City of Saginaw proclamation in memory of Gregory Lynn Branch. Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council, we honor the memory of Gregory Lynn Branch, whose rich and abundant life came to a close after 62 years on February 9, 2019. And whereas Greg Branch was a beloved father, husband, son, and brother, he leaves us to cherish his memory, his wife Anne, three children, Grace, Samuel, and Benjamin, his mother Lynn Ann Branch, and an entire community of family, friends, and colleagues. And whereas Greg was born and raised in Saginaw and lived within a mile of his birthplace his entire life, many will remember him for his devotion and loyalty to the City of Saginaw. Greg will forever be known as a champion for this community. And whereas Greg took great pride in serving on City Council from 2005 until 2013, in 2009 he was elected to serve as mayor for the next four years. He served as mayor during a very challenging period in Saginaw, and his wise decisions during those tumultuous times are still making a positive impact in the City of Saginaw. And whereas Greg's service to the city did not stop once he completed his term on City Council, he continued to improve the City of Saginaw, serving on numerous boards and commissions such as Riverfront Saginaw, the MBS Airport Commission, Hidden Harvest, and Child and Family Services of Saginaw County. And whereas Greg was a self-proclaimed history nerd and poured his passion into the preservation of Saginaw's rich history, he served on the Historic District Commission of Saginaw for many years. He was also a published author, writing Saginaw County Visions of the Valley on the history of Saginaw. And whereas Greg also distinguished himself as an incredible communicator and a creative force in the advertising industry, for more than 40 years, he created and shaped memorable and lasting messages and brand strategies for thousands of businesses and municipal entities throughout the Great Lakes Bay region. And whereas there are many ways to remember our beloved friend and community servant Greg Branch, many will remember him as a prudent policymaker, master craftsman, gifted communicator, and brilliant historian, as well as athlete, husband, father, and beloved friend. Words cannot convey how Greg enriched the lives of so many in this city. His death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. Now therefore be it resolved, I Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life, outstanding achievements, and contributions of Gregory L. Branch to the City of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 22nd day of July in the year of our Lord 2019. Signed by myself, Floyd Clark as Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Protam, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Bill Oystash, and Autumn L. Scherzer, and by Timothy Morales, City Manager. And please step forward. We'd all like to congratulate you personally. If you'll start with Councilmember Oystash.
Anne, I'm so glad we could do this.
We're sorry for your loss, but we're glad he was here.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Do you hear me? Because.
Anne, I know it may be difficult, but if you have a few words, we would love to hear them. You can just step to the podium.
Mr. Morales, Mayor Clark, and members of council, and everyone, I am honored to receive this proclamation recognizing Greg's contributions to the City of Saginaw. Greg believed that if he wanted to change something, you should work to do so, and he was honored to serve the city. He was not naive. He recognized that the city faced many challenges, but he was optimistic. He believed Saginaw could be better for all of her citizens, and he strove to do his part. Greg was pleased that other very capable people also stepped forward to serve on council and to continue to drive the city's progress. Thank you all for your efforts to make Saginaw the best it can be for all of us.
Thank you, Anne, but before you step away, we have one more honor. Thomas Roy, Diane Mattel, would you step up, please?
We'd like to present this flag to the greatness that Greg has done for the city and for the community. He was a great big supporter of our fireworks. We appreciate you and him.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome to stay for the rest of the session. You do not need to, however, if you'd rather move on. So we leave it to you.
Mayor, your next order of business is public input.
And do we have public input today?
Would you like to read the rules?
Oh, yes, I should do that. Public input. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council to me. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious considerations to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Our first speaker this evening is Eric Carvin.
Thank you. My name's Eric Carvin. I live at 1003 Mackinac, and I'm speaking solely for myself. At the council meeting back on June 17th, I asked a question about a traffic engineering budgeted expenditure to be funded out of the general fund. The expenditure appears in the fiscal year 2020 budget document on a list that shows 11 divisions of the Public Services Department with funding from the general fund. The budgeted expenditures for most of these divisions is shown elsewhere in the budget document on pages headed "Expenditure Analysis Detail," but there is no such page for traffic engineering. There is no page for 101-4621 Traffic Engineering as there is, for example, for 101-1747 Cemeteries Operations. It is thus impossible to make a connection between the amount of $30,788 for traffic engineering shown on page 119 of the budget document and the same amount shown elsewhere in the budget document. A councilman whom the city manager described as absolutely correct remarked at the meeting that sometimes the connections in the budget can be hard to make. In my view, it would have been more correct to say sometimes the connections in the budget are impossible to make. The councilmen also remarked, sometimes we have a budget line item that covers the overhead for a department, and the employees may be funded out of separate funds. As to this, I would suggest that the amount of $30,788 to come out of the general fund for traffic engineering is not a budget line item because the budget document does not put this expenditure in any category. According to the glossary usually included as an appendix in Saginaw's approved annual budget documents, quote, "A line item budget is a budget that lists detailed expenditure categories and lists specific amounts by category," close quote. The current budget document contains no page-headed expenditure analysis detail showing line items for traffic engineering's budget of the general fund. The city manager said the reference $30,000 was for insurance and something else that sounded to me like illities. The manager's revelation is not to be found in the budget document. I conclude with these questions. How was the exact figure of $30,788 arrived at? Why wouldn't the budget document simply round off this amount to, say, $31,000? Finally, what sort of insurance was the manager referring to, and why would an expenditure for insurance be funded out of the general fund instead of another fund? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carvin.
Our next speaker is John Vasquez.
Good evening, council. My name is John Vasquez. I live at 227 Wiley. I'm here on my own behalf. I've owned a business in Old Town for two years on Court in Michigan, and I just wanted to let you guys know, as far as public input is concerned, I'm pro marijuana facilities and businesses in Old Town and business districts within the city limits. So I just wanted to show up, and here I am.
Thank you.
Yep.
Our next speaker is Natalie Vasquez.
My name is Natalie Vasquez. I too reside at 227 Wiley Street in Saginaw and represent myself and members of the Old Town Association. As the new vice president of the Old Town Association, we've been kind of trying to figure out what we can do with some of the vacancies that we have and different things. And since it's kind of at a standstill, I just came to show support in kind of opting in for recreational marijuana facilities as well. I think it would generate a little bit more revenue, put people to work, kind of bring in some dispensable income, you know, for people who have the jobs, give people who are in trades, businesses, an opportunity for more work and different things like that.
Thank you.
Yep. My next speaker is Nicholas Bajovis.
Good evening. Nick Bajovis, 2116 Marquette, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. So I'm up here, I'm not going to say anything new from what I already stated at the Perkins Street meeting earlier this spring, but my purpose here today is to urge the leadership of Saginaw to create a thoughtful medical and recreational cannabis ordinance. The cannabis industry operates in dog ears, and the window is closing for the city to have an advantage in the industry and for aspiring entrepreneurs in the area. Almost the entirety of Bay County has proven the medical model successful so far, and we can't let these neighboring communities take our money, our talent, jobs, and these innovators within our own borders while we acquiesce to a permanent black market. So my purpose here is to encourage you to act sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Sydney Weiss.
My name is Sydney Weiss. I reside at 3325 Benscarth Avenue, and I'm here on my own behalf, just speaking pro bringing medical marijuana facilities within the city limit. I think it would not only create jobs, but draw people in from other neighboring communities that are driving to Bay City or different counties in the area, and they're spending their money there, and they're buying lunch there, and they're bringing money into those small businesses there, and I think that we could take advantage of that and bring that money into our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Janie Cascaden.
Hi, I'm Janie Cascaden. I reside at 845 Carrawell Drive in Carlton. However, I own Rock Your Lock Salon in Saginaw on the corner of Court in Michigan. Over the years, I've seen a lot of things come in and out of Saginaw, and I believe that if we bring an industry like marijuana to Saginaw, as we've seen all over the United States where they've legalized facilities and in Bay County where they've legalized facilities, not only will we create jobs, we'll create a future for people who are really good at farming and things like that, but maybe don't have the ability to purchase a plot of land. They could go work at these facilities, make money, and make money for the city by bringing in taxes. We've been looking for an industry for a really long time, since the auto industry went under, and I think this could be a really good segue. Not only are we talking about marijuana, the ability to get people medical things that they need, but hemp is a really largely growing industry. There's hemp concrete, there's hemp replacing wood. We're not just talking about the sale of it, we're talking about expanding on a whole new world of possibilities for Saginaw, which I think we need desperately. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Saleem Manan.
My name is Saleem Manan, and I live at 1514 Milton Street, and I'm here as a citizen representing myself. I rise in opposition to this marijuana issue, and I come from a different perspective. I want to first of all begin by reading our mission as a city. I'm pretty sure when they put this mission together, they would never entertain the idea that we would be contemplating dope, being in the business of dope in this City of Saginaw. The City of Saginaw is committed to providing high-quality service to ensure an inclusive, safe, and vibrant community in which to live, work, learn, and play. I don't want to make nobody uncomfortable, but marijuana has been in the hood for many years. In fact, all of the drugs, the cheap alcohol, Detroit licensed by the state have a liquor store, two of them, in one block in Detroit. Flint, liquor stores everywhere. Before the water crisis, the state regulates that. The lottery, they told us was going to bring money back for the schools. It used to be blacks who ran the illegal number business and made money from it. They told us that they would keep the school open. Why wouldn't you? And I was in Ben Harbor, and they had to fight to keep the only African-American school there, even though they collect all of this lottery money from us. Now, you sure that they're going to put this out here and somehow we're going to benefit? They put these drugs in our neighborhood to eliminate us because to them, we're misfit. We're the misfit race, and they want to eliminate us with marijuana. In Detroit in 1967, a riot broke out. I, in middle school, was doing marijuana and drinking alcohol, using drugs. When the riot broke out, you could not get marijuana. It was a panic on it. They flooded the community with cheap heroin. It was a dollar. Everywhere else that heroin cost $20. They wanted to flood Detroit. Detroit has not recovered from that. So when you can't get marijuana, you got to get something else. They all come from the same source, and they do the same thing. They got you food that somehow marijuana liquor is better than this, this better than that, opium better than that. They all come from the same source, and they want to mess up the masses with this junk because they only think that you're animals. That's why they put fentanyl in the drugs, because it's an animal tranquilizer. They get you hooked on marijuana, young people, and they're coming at you with the hardest stuff. I'm an African-American, I suffered this stuff. I am qualified to tell you that these drugs come from the same thing, and this is not advancing humanity at all. And it's, I'm surprised and alarmed that you people would sit here and even entertain making Saginaw a dope place. I'm an African American, I suffered it. These young people standing here, they can do other things rather than smoking dope. I was a safety trainer in the plant. You know, we couldn't hire people that was on drugs that were a safety hazard.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I hope I didn't make anyone uncomfortable. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Debbie Melkonian.
Good evening. I'm here to give you guys an update on the 221 Borland Court. First time Borland Court demolition came to our attention was at our April 24th association meeting. It was suggested by a resident that a letter be drafted and written from all of the residents of Borland Court. In May, the letter was written, a petition was signed by each resident living on Borland Court, and mailed to all of you guys, which I know you received several copies of. I was told the city is not responsible at this point for this property, and I needed to speak with authorities at the land bank and/or with the county treasurer and county commissioners. I then, I then, oh, sorry, my mind's going this way. I then met with John Stempel, and we discussed the proper procedures to try and figure out how this can be accomplished. One of our residents, and he explained how, one of our residents, a former employee of Consumers, did speak with a friend that was still working and asked whether or not the shut-off for electrical and gas had been put in place to happen at Borland Court. I then explained, told John that this hadn't happened. He then pursued it and spoke with a Jackie Cheslick at Consumers Energy, and she was sent an email on June 14th. Elena Ortiz responded to Mr. Stempel stating that 221 Boulevard was a priority for shut-off by the end of July. In addition to that, Tom Miller, Sr., sent a letter to Jacqueline stating, "The county land bank is the owner of the property at 221 Borland Court. Please terminate the gas and electric service in preparation for demolition." It also requested that after the utilities have been cut off, to please sign, date, and fax the form back to his office so we can mark our records accordingly. The resident living next door to 221 emailed me in joy stating that Consumers was at the pole at 221 to do the electrical part. Now we're waiting for the gas line. At this point, I have not been told whether or not the gas line has been shut off, but I do know that the process will continue. I want to thank the council, John Stempel's office, and all those people involved that have made this progress to the point that we're at. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have copies of emails and the letter.
Mayor, our next order of business is remarks of council.
All right. I want to remind councilmembers of a three-minute time limit. Today, we start with Mayor Protam Moore.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you so much, Ms. Anne, for sharing your precious jewel with the City of Saginaw. He truly will be missed. For all of our public speakers who spoke, we are taking everything into consideration. I did have the opportunity to go to the tall ships in Bay City. It was a beautiful opportunity. It was just truly nice. I was fascinated, even though it was too hot to breathe. I was excited. I was excited because the way that they have their pier is the vision that I see for us in Saginaw one day. To walk, to just walk and just walk and just have a good time, it was something to behold. I also attended the first night at Friday Night Live. It was good. We don't have any vendors for food, so anybody that knows anybody for vendors for food, please come out. Please come out. We don't have Magic Kitchen this year. So come out and give us some real good food. There was good food there, but it just wasn't enough. You know, normally you take $30 and you spend that and go into your back pocket to get some more money. That wasn't the case. The other thing is, coming up this Friday, at our last meeting or meeting before, I did suggest that we do a table at Friday Night Live. I'm asking all councilpersons if you would help participate. If you're busy, it's okay, but it is a way for us to meet, greet, and talk to the community people. We did it, it light up the city, and those that did it, you must admit, we had a ball. Ms. Jamie Hayes so graciously came up with some designs for coloring. We want to try to grow our little bank, city manager, so that we could get crams and so that we can get some stuff to hand out to the children. I just think that in order for us to represent our city the way that we do, we need to be out front. We don't need to just sit behind this desk. We need to be out in the community, shaking hands, kissing babies, and doing the things that we need to do. So on Friday, I will be at Morley Plaza, probably about 4:30. I'm not asking you to be there then, but if you could be there by 5:30 to just sit and meet and greet our citizens, I sure would appreciate it. Once again, Morley Plaza, don't look at me like that, Michael. Morley Plaza at 5:30. If you can, please come out. We had a ball when we were at O.G. White. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on. Couldn't have timed that better. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all of our public speakers. We are, as Mayor Protam said, listening to everybody, including the survey that was provided and available on the city's website. Just want to start off by saying thank you so much to Anne. There's really nothing to say. I know that some members of my family got to know Greg, and my grandparents, and Lynn Ann, and everybody over there, and Grandma Spots over in the neighborhood, but just want to say thank you so much for sharing Greg with us, and his contributions to our community were invaluable. One of the things I had the opportunity to do over the course of the time from our last meeting was talk to some of our youth, and I showed them our new branding video, and Greg wrote the script for that. And it is just so awesome. And it's been a long time. We haven't really had a lot of materials that we've been able to give out, but we can share that video. And seeing those kids look at some of the things across our city, really to take it to heart, and not only to have some extra stuff to go with it, but that video was huge. It's really huge, and we're going to, not really, probably in the next couple of years, we'll realize its full impact, but it was just great to be with those kids. They loved that video, and they loved those words that were put in there, and that's what we're here to do, is build opportunity for everyone. Thank you, Mayor Protam, for the reminder. I will see you Friday evening. And just a reminder, Councilman Clark, or Mayor Clark, we do have our planning commission meeting tomorrow. And just by way of announcement, I will be on the EOA Board, the Elected Officials Academy for MML. Had an opportunity to stop by Rock the Island just before the storm blow in, and it was absolutely nice. I did get some reports over the past couple of weeks of some dumping that's been going on over in the Potter Street area, as well as some parties. And I understand, because I had communication with the chief just yesterday. Fourth of July is not over. Fireworks are still going off, and my neighbors, instead of calling 911, they don't want to call 911, they want to call me. So I'm just going to let them know, I'm going to give them the CPO's number, and I'm going to tell them, if they're not getting a response, call 911. Because, you know, videos and things, they're nice, but we have to remember what we're here for. We're here for strong neighborhoods, and we're not going to be able to... We're here for strong neighborhoods and we're not going to be able to rebuild our community if we don't have people who live in our community. So that's something that we're going to continue to work on and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you. I'd just like to repeat, uh, those that have already spoken, and thank you again, Anne, for sharing him with us. I am so very sure that he has changed our city forever. I'd like to thank all of our speakers tonight and those that filled out the online survey regarding recreational marijuana. I've had lots of conversations over the last couple of months and I know that there's a lot more to learn about how all this is going to play out in our community. I took particular note of the comment regarding medical marijuana because I know that the state is so firm about regulations and process on medical marijuana than they are on recreational marijuana. As Mayor Protemmore mentioned, an incredibly talented Saginaw native, Sidney Ververka, has offered to let council pass out a few pages from her awesome full-size coloring book that is available at Dawn of a New Day Coffee House. We should have a few of those at public events soon. She's also the artist that painted the Great Mural Project's latest mural in, in Old Town Saginaw, so take a look on the, on the north side of the Fralius Building to see that. And we just want to thank Sidney, so thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for everybody for coming. It's good to see everybody here. All of our public speakers that came out, you've taken the time, so we are listening as my fellow council members have stated. I also want to say, just another announcement too, that there's an Old Town Art Fair that's coming up that's going to be on August 9th and 10th, so that's always a great event. I've heard that it's gotten a little bigger this year as these events kind of do, so I'm looking forward to attending that. And I also had the opportunity, I attended the Wicks Park Neighborhood Association and they're doing some really good stuff over there. They're kind of chugging away and trying to get some groundwork laid, so I, my hats off to them, they're making some great progress. So, and I also thank them for letting me just kind of crash into their meeting and sit with them, so that was a good event there. Also, Mayor, actually Brendan Moore, Protem, I will be at Friday Night Live. It's Latin night and that's always a very fun event and to watch everybody dancing. And then I'm going to close my remarks with, uh, to my friend Anne Branch. I'm gonna try and hold it together. You know how close we are to you. You've been friends of our family for over 15 years and longer. He is greatly missed. He was an inspiration to me. I served with Greg on the Historic District Commission for many, many years. I was the chair as he went off to serve on city council and then also to become our mayor. And I don't think anybody actually knows this, but I actually worked on the campaign where Greg Branch was elected to city council. So that was one of the, kind of the first advocacy things that I took on when I moved here to Saginaw and started getting involved in our city and just doing different. So I love you guys and you know that, and so thanks for coming out tonight. It was an honor to be here for his proclamation and it was an extreme honor to have my name on that proclamation for my dear friend, who was definitely a mentor to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming here and speaking and voicing your concerns here this evening. Mrs. Branch, I would like to thank you for allowing your husband to serve the city of Saginaw, you and to share him with us. The city of Saginaw is a great place because he really loved the city of Saginaw. We thank him for that and you too. Last week, I was talking about, last, a couple of weeks ago, about the tombstones that's out at the gravesite and I'd like to report that they all have been put down. Everybody noticed it was raining a little bit. It stopped a lot, but it's still raining a little more, but they are all down. So people like to know things about that and I wanted to let Mayor McDonald know about this too, so I definitely passed a letter on to her. Mr. Stempel sent a letter to the board of directors of Wine and Gas Credit Union a couple of days ago, asking for a donation for the new exercise pad out there. And I wanted to report to him and to the city that we're going to donate $1,000 to help that out. So it's always good to be able to help out the city of Saginaw with donations. Other than that, I don't have too much to say. I just hope that the city of Saginaw be safe. There's a lot of things going on and you know, when it gets warm outside, we have a tendency to have a lot of citizens do a lot of negative things. So, uh, the best way to prevent that, I think, is to engage everybody and talk to them and let them know how much they are loved and how much we appreciate that they try to love everybody else because a lot of negative stuff goes on in the city of Saginaw and a lot of good things too, don't get me wrong, but sometimes the negative things have a tendency to glare sometimes, so. If you see a kid out there where you think is kind of wayward or not doing the right thing, engage him. You know, let him know, you know, pull him to the side, talk to him. I do like I do in my neighborhood, I put him to work. I spend a lot of money sometime, but it's worth it because I have the opportunity to talk to the kids and I'm, when I'm paying them, I tell them to look me in the eye and tell me what they think the, the job they did is worth and we have, we never have a report and it works pretty good and they have a tendency to come back and thank me later on when they get grown too, so. It's always good to help out those who can't necessarily help themselves. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I just want to briefly say, Anne, I can truly say that Greg, and knowing Greg is one of the reasons I sit here now, so that's kind of influence he had. I have some special good info, uh, news for Councilman Balls. Knowing his association with the Boys and Girls Club in Saginaw.
He's brother and sister.
Sorry. I had that one backwards. Gosh, I think I've, I've made a mistake then. I'm going to talk to you privately.
No good.
I did want to mention, uh, we've heard of some of the events going on around here. Our partners at Great Lakes Bay Region continue helping bring these major events to our area. The weekend saw the Tall Ship Celebration in Bay City, the completion of the inaugural LPGA Dow Invitational in Midland, and we had Rock the Island over on OJibway. And coming up in August, we have the Old Town Art Fair mentioned by Councilman Ostache and the Gospel Fest is going to be back on OJibway. So they help move the focus around the area. Something is going on in each of the cities in their, in their area. I did have, one thing I want to mention about a city department especially, the fire department had a rescue of an unconscious man from an apartment where there was a fire and it was believed the apartment was emptied by people who lived in the other apartment and it just goes to show our, our firefighters approach every structure fire as a possible rescue possibility and they performed very well. Battalion Chief Rains was very pleased with their performance at that fire, so thank you to the fire department, good job. And I'm gonna pass that along.
Thank you. Councilmember Shigeru.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I could mirror everything that my fellow council member said. I didn't know former Mayor Greg Branch personally, but the impact that he's had, I met him for the first time at, actually, the strategic planning session, so just speaking to him briefly, I could tell how impactful he, his legacy has been within the city, but also knowing as a resident and being involved, Greg was an amazing person and thank you for sharing him with all of us. I too want to thank the speakers that came. It is very, I am glad that some business owners came. We've had some citizens speak out, but knowing that a couple of businesses have been here and they're involved, um, thank you. I just want to say thank you for coming tonight and sharing your perspective. I also wanted to say congratulations, I should just say, give my accolades to the fire department. Like Councilmember Millen said, Battalion Chief Rains and the crew and Chief Anlu, thank you for your swift approach and for your actions. I also want to say thank you to the East Side Soup Kitchen. It has been hot and humid for a little bit and they opened their doors to the public for a cooling station and I just want to say thank you because it's organizations and the efforts like that that keep our community viable, safe, and more inclusive. It is going to be hot, it is now July, moving into August, so please check on your friends and family, especially the elderly, make sure they're okay, take them some ice and some water, just, just make sure they're okay because it is very important. And then lastly, I just want to make note to the Green City of Saginaw Green Team, your tomatoes that you gave me at the Green Team event this past spring are huge. I didn't think tomatoes could get that big, but I'm gonna share some pictures with the Green Team members and encourage my fellow council members to attend, support the Green Team efforts and events that they're doing. Mayor Protem, I will see you Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can always count on my fellow council members to cover just about everything. So rather than belabor the points, I will simply give my accolades, my respect to you, Anne, for Greg, the opportunity I had to work with him. It wasn't as long on council as others before us. Those were two years he was mayor and on other commissions and boards and he deserved every bit of respect that everyone has given to him. It was an honor to be able to read the proclamation today. So I also say thank you for sharing us and that's all I have.
We are now to the reports of the manager.
Thank you and, and I would echo that, Anne, and Greg was the manager when, or the mayor when, when I was selected as interim city manager and I worked with him as assistant city manager too and the manager always works closely with the mayor, so I, I always appreciated Greg. Level-headed and thoughtful, he always got facts before he talked and that was appreciated. Still, even after leaving city council, serving on the airport commission as the chair, I think, multiple times. Great at running a meeting and, as I said, always thoughtful and asked great questions and we really appreciated that. And for those who don't know, Greg did give great state of the city speeches, no offense to any other mayor.
He was, he was a communicator.
He wrote every word himself, so that's, that is amazing. All he ever asked us for was data, so it was very entertaining speeches, so appreciate you sharing him with us as well. And just a few items to update council on. I did meet with Linda Clark and some of you may have attended a presentation that she gave. She is a partnership specialist with the 2020 Census. So the Census count for 2020 is going to be really important for the city of Saginaw. You know, the threshold for HUD funds and CDPG funds, the population data is used to distribute that funding. It's also used to calculate state shared revenue that is in the formula. It's in the formula for gas and weight tax distribution to local units. So in my opinion, Saginaw should seriously consider a complete count committee, which I can send information to the rest of the council for that. I don't know if anyone has that already, but the mayor is typically the chair of that and we would have a staff member work with the mayor on coordinating that, but it would also include various members of the community for outreach so that the information on responding can get out to everybody in the community so that everybody can be counted. The Census is also, I think, probably nationally, they are having some issues with hiring people and they do want to hire local workers. So when I get that information, I'll share that with you as well. They're going to be working with Michigan Works Downtown and they also want to have not a job fair, but a kind of an application fair at some of the libraries as well, so. Do you have suggestions about that or places where they might be able to share that? You can send it to me too and I'll, I'll get it back to Census. They're supposed to be setting up regional offices. Fortunately, I think the closest one for us will be Lansing. I think that's going to be the mid-Michigan regional office, but they seem pretty interested in working with us, so if we get the committee set up, I think that will be a great first step. So I'll send the council information on that. I know the mayor and Mayor Protem are aware and some other councils maybe as well, but the Urban Corps Mayors Group at one time was very active. It declined in activity and then now under the leadership of the Michigan Municipal League is picking back up again. They recently, uh, last week, I attended a Urban Corps Opportunity Zone workshop, which was really interesting. They had some presenters from Los Angeles that run Accelerator Program and they help communities set up their prospectus, which is something that you need to have to be able to pitch to potential investors. The, one of the key points is at the session, the MML was asking if the Urban Corps communities could have something ready by early fall for the MML conference and potentially they're trying to set up an investor workshop where you could bring your prospectus. So I will be sharing that with Saginaw Future and there's some great examples out there. There are a few cities in Michigan are, so there's some samples out there. Key point for us is that a lot of the data and information that you need is something that we have because of redevelopment-ready communities. So I think that gives us a great starting point for putting this together. And finally, Chief Ruth was notified that the International Association of Chiefs of Police has selected the Saginaw Police Department to receive the IACP Leadership and Victim Services Award. SPD will be recognized at the 2019 IACP Annual Meeting. Leadership and Victim Services Award recognizes agencies that best exemplify an organizational philosophy of placing victims at the center of their problem-solving efforts by utilizing partnerships, training methods, and performance monitoring tools to enhance law enforcement response to victims of crime. And many of you may recall that that really wasn't a focus probably five or six years ago. That was a new position, grant-funded position at the police department, so that focus, I think, has primarily taken place under Chief Ruth with the staff there and they've been working with community mental health and also the other nonprofits in Saginaw to provide those victim services. So it's good that they're being recognized and I'm glad to report that. So congratulations to the police department on moving that forward. And they do get, they do get nominations nationwide for that one, so it's quite a, I think, an achievement for them, especially since they started from scratch.
I think that deserves it.
And that concludes management update.
If I may ask, Mr. Manager, is there, will there be a motion required to do the complete count committee? If you know.
There may be. I can put, put together some information for you though, so you have more to do that.
That'd be good, thank you. If we're gonna do it, I think we want to move quickly rather than.
Correct, I agree.
I got a question. I met with Robert Bellman from the county commissioners when they had the presentation done by Saginaw Future. John Stempel, don't sit back there like you don't know what we're talking about. John Stempel was named the person from the city that was going to work on that committee. John, what is your name that they told me? For working with the Census count?
Right.
Okay. And you were the person, the chosen person that they asked to work? That's what I'm talking about? Okay, so I guess I'm, my, my question is, can we, instead of doing a council thing, I mean, some of us can be on it, I'm not saying we don't need to be on it, since John has already been recruited, can we make sure that John heads us or John starts that? I mean.
Well, from, from my understanding, from meeting with the representative from the Census, they would have a county group, but they also want to have a city-specific group, so I would, they did specifically mention the mayor chairing that group, but yes, I think, I think it's a great idea to have John be the staff person for that.
Yeah, because he don't work for the county, he work for the city. He works for the city, not the county. We need him over on our team. John, don't worry, I'm a volunteer, I'll be with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. The consent agenda, Madam Clark, are we ready?
Yes, that is the next order of your business, is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available. The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions? No exceptions. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Support.
And there's a support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
We are now at boards, commissions, and committee reports.
Thank you. Are there any reports of city boards and commissions? Any reports? None, okay.
Mayor, next is the appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any exceptions for items one through five to be noted by the clerk? Six is not a council appointment. Any exceptions to one through five? Hearing none, can there be a motion to approve items one through five? So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. I'd like to mention that we have, I have the mayoral appointment of Don Hinton to the Saginaw Housing Commission with a term to expire September 30th, 2024. No motion is needed. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, the next order of business goes to miscellaneous businesses.
All right. Is there any other business to come before council this time? Mayor Protem Moore.
At this time, Mayor, I'd like for us to direct the staff to move forward with opt-out ordinance for the marijuana with the provisions of a 12-month lookout. So, in 12 months, we can come back, before, within a 12-month period, we can come and look at it. But we need time. So, I'm asking that we move forward with having the city staff begin to make preparation for opt-out ordinance with the provisions of relooking at it.
Okay. The motion has been made, and if I may restate it, are you referring to having a sunset provision in the, of 12 months to the proposed opt-out ordinance?
A sunset provision, yes.
And the purpose is to?
It's for us to get all of the information and to put stuff in place so that if we decide to move forward, we will have some concrete stuff to move forward on.
By moving forward, you mean to allow marijuana, recreational marijuana facilities?
Yes.
Or whatever the choice would be.
Or whatever the consensus would be of the council at that time.
Mayor, Madam Clerk, do you have enough information to rephrase the motion? If not, I will attempt, and you can tell me, Mayor Protem. The motion appears to be to have.
Requesting city staff.
To.
To prepare an opt-out ordinance.
With a 12-month sunset provision, and the purpose of the 12 months is to give management the opportunity to prepare any documents that council desires regarding either opting in or continuing to opt out. Does that state it adequately?
That is it.
I will second the motion.
All right. Is there any discussion?
What difference does it make if we make the, if we make this motion or not? I mean, if we don't, if we don't say anything, isn't the city supposed to be preparing to opt in or out anyway?
Well, Madam Attorney, do you have information that will help enlighten everyone on that point?
Well, if the city does nothing, and the state begins taking applications, currently they're saying they intend to begin taking applications November 1st, it could be as early as October 2nd. If they begin taking applications with nothing in place, we have effectively opted in with no sort of local regulation.
We can't understand. The state has regulations, am I right? So, we may not have any regulations, but the state have regulations. Am I right? Are we going by state law or is it just city law or what?
There are state law and state rules that are in place, but local municipalities, township cities, and villages are allowed to enact certain ordinances. If it were the desire of council to opt in, ordinances that we would look at preparing would include a zoning ordinance, which would determine certain things, most importantly, where we would want certain, what types of facilities located, as well as a licensing ordinance, because we license all businesses in the city of Saginaw.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ross?
I was under this, my understanding was that they would get their licenses from the state, though. I mean, they have a business license here, but like the actual license for their facilities would come from the state, correct?
If you look at how the medical marijuana facility industry has been going, there's both the licensing process at the local level as well as at the state.
Council, Mayor Protem.
We had a webinar on Tuesday that described that, and basically what it said was, I was on it, and Amy was on it, and I don't know who else, but some of whom chose to be on it. And basically, what it said is, is that if we do nothing, we get nothing. At the end of the day, I'm stating what I'm stating because I want us to be prepared. Walking in to nothing with nothing, we won't get anything. And the way the law was stated on the seminar that we did, it stated clearly that people who had medical marijuana license were probably going to be the first opt to get it. We have no medical marijuana licensing in our area. We keep saying we want to keep stuff at home. If we want to keep it at home, then we need to do whatever it is we need to do to make it stay at home. But to have outsiders come in and just flood us because they have their medical marijuana licensing already, I've just got some concerns, okay? And we have no onset rules right now with anything. So, for us to say yes and have nothing prepared, that's not fair to the citizens who want us to opt out. I'd like to see it be a fair, I'm sorry, a fair playing ground across the board for everybody. Now, can we do that? The answer is probably no, but it's our obligations that we, if the choice by the consensus of the council is to opt in, we do need to have stuff in place, and we don't have anything. And the question becomes, can we get it in three months, four months?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe we can either. I've been following this for two years, and I've been asking for us to have the conversation.
Would you? I'm going to, Councilmember Mill, not his hand raised, I'll come back.
I think something would be worth making clear here. Amy Lusk alluded to part of it. The state law, the enacted law, what people passed at the ballot box, only sets a very broad framework. The state rules don't go at all to number of facilities you want in a given municipality, where you want them located. That is all left open to a municipality if they wish to opt in. They then can set via zoning ordinance and business ordinances how to do that. But if we set nothing in place, and we've been clear, the time to do that is longer than it would take for when the state would start issuing licenses. Any number could happen then. And I'll use as one example, Mayor Protem mentioned, medical facilities. On our border, we have a very large medical grow and processing and dispensing facility going up. They would then also be able to immediately move across the border into Saginaw because they do already have a medical license. And so, this is a way of us taking control of the process without having to have a final decision on it. And as the motion makes clear, in a year, we might still opt out. The questions that are being raised may not all be answered in a year. I think one of the first thing that's going to happen is during this year, we're going to see what litigation gets filed in or against some of the other municipalities who have opted in, and we will find out there is a difference between what is allowed by the state and what is beneficial to any given municipality. And we may decide whether it is beneficial to our municipality or not. And I use that term rather than saying city of Saginaw just because the law doesn't reference Saginaw specifically. Although it all, one of these unknowns that are slowly becoming known, Saginaw has already been designated by the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, a state agency, as one of the 19 communities in the state that has to give special preference because we have had extra impact in our community from previous law enforcement actions on marijuana. One of the reasons we're on that list is we had no ordinance in place opting out yet. There were other cities in Michigan who had opt-out ordinances in place. They were not placed on that list because at the moment, they have opted out. The 19 cities listed in that list all have no ordinance opting out yet. So, there's work to do, and I think this is the first step to doing it.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, so, I'm trying to get clarification on the motion, on what the intent is. Is the intent to say that we're going to opt out right now and have the city draw up ordinance so that we can opt in later? Is that what you're saying?
So that we can review, yes. And if that's the pleasure of the council, once we get stuff in place, then we move forward. But right now, we have nothing.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that, so actually, we need a vote to have the city prepare paperwork so we can opt in later? Is that what you're saying?
We will consider if we're going to do it. Basically.
I think, if I may, certainly a separate motion could do that. I think we need, we have one motion, and I'm not sure you want to, I have no problem with another motion, but I think I'd rather have one on the table and go from there. From what I understand, the motion understands that we may wish to opt in at that point.
We may wish to opt in once the rules get set.
Of course, if that's the case, we will need, we'll have ordinances in place. Councilmember Ross? Oh, Councilmember Forbes?
The two areas that I am most interested in, and in terms of what we as a community can decide, I am very appreciative that there is some space for us to make decisions about what's appropriate for our specific community. The two areas that I am most interested in, in terms of those specific details, are how are we going to choose from the folks that apply? Should we open up for recreational marijuana? And so many folks apply for those licenses. How we will choose from that group or allow anyone that applies to go ahead and move forward? And then the other area that I'm most interested in is how we will decide where we will allow different kinds of marijuana facilities to locate. And so, I guess I was wondering if you would be willing to speak on some ways that other communities have chosen from the applicants and zoned accordingly, and what has come from those choices, and if they have experienced litigation based on those choices?
Okay. I can only answer at this point as to how things have gone under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act. And it's two different games when it comes to local licensing. Under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, what we're seeing for the most part is communities who are limiting numbers of facilities are using some sort of random selection process to delineate through licenses, a lottery, some form, is what they're using. Under MRTMA, under the Recreational Facilities License Act, we're precluded from doing that. It has some very vague language that frankly, the emergency rules did nothing to help us clarify, that locals need to establish some sort of discretionary process to pick amongst the applicants, and we have to, in our discretion, determine who's best. That's litigation waiting to happen, and communities are struggling with that because we don't know how to define that.
Can I ask, what if we did not define it? What if we let the market decide how many businesses our communities could support?
That depends on the discretion of the council, whether you limit the number of facilities or whether you don't.
So, perhaps the only way that we could avoid litigation in that particular area is to not put a cap on it. Do you know of any other communities that have chosen that route?
I'm not specifically aware of any communities that have already drafted a recreational marijuana ordinance, so.
Okay. I guess that's all for now, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Ross has?
No, I will have something in a second, I think. Autumn, did you have something?
I thought it was understanding that for recreational facilities, that we don't need to do anything locally is because of the state licensing.
No, both, under both facility laws, there's allowed to be local regulation. The state has ultimate control, but locally, we can enact ordinances so long as those ordinances don't take any enforcement measures beyond what the state provides for.
So, but does that, if we opt out of medical, does that?
We're on recreational.
I know. But I'm saying, if we opt out of medical, doesn't that opt us out of recreational?
No, they're two separate.
Okay, I'm just, one clarification.
Two separate laws, two separate sets of administrative rules.
Councilmember Ross?
Kind of going to what Jamie was just talking about. The recreational law states that they can't be in residential areas. So, we, even if we did create an ordinance down the road, I just want people to know this, that, because that's a lot of conversation right now, is people are wondering if it would be in their neighborhood, and so it would have to be outside of our R1 districts, correct? Because that's what I was reading.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. The other thing, too, I wanted to get some more clarification on because Councilman Mill brought it up, was the social impact, which, we are one of the 19 cities, that we would, do we have to, would that have to be part of our ordinance if we crafted that down the road? That we would have to some sort of program because we've had certain citizens in the city that have been disproportionately affected because of marijuana?
And I haven't seen a lot of information coming out of the state yet with regard to the social equity program. My understanding of it at this point, though, is that within those cities that are selected, the state then is looking to give discounts in the state licensing process to certain individuals who meet certain different criteria.
So, going back to some of our conversation here, too, we've been talking about the 12-month, our 12-month window. And, well, even before I get there, I'm going to bring this, I just want to go, I want to go here a little bit, too. So, even though we're not discussing the medical issues, the medical issues in the state of Michigan have really been solidified. And so, people are probably unaware, except for the people that are in the industry, and we have some here in the audience that I know are looking to have facilities in other areas in the medical field. I think that we should have a conversation on that because it was kind of already alluded to here at the table, that medical could be a precursor, making it easier into the recreational facilities. So, even though that's not the motion on the table, I think we as a body should consider that in the very near future, and we could set that up because there is a lot of benefit to the medical industry. I know personally, people that are experiencing great benefits in it, and even it's being used in pharmaceuticals now. So, it's not like it's not there. And some of the people that spoke tonight, it's not just smoking pot. It's in fabrics, it's in ropes, it's in all kinds of, in the industry that can, that can they do down the road that I think we could look at. But going back to the recreational piece and the 12-month period, Councilwoman Moore, I think 12 months is too long for us to look at this, and we're just, if we're just going to plainly opt out, I think we need to have some sort of. of amendment to our motion to say that at this point, we're going to try, we are going to opt in. Because right now, even though we have the citizens that are here, I'm on the street all the time. I know the beat of the city, and I know what they're saying, whether it's with our pastors or within the clergy. They just want to make sure that we get our arms around this, and then it's done correctly so that we're not putting facilities next to churches and schools and other certain things, and that we do really follow the state's lead on this. And everybody knows, I'm for this industry. I've been in the news on it, and I just want to say that I think that we really need to take a look at it because what I'm hearing from the citizens in this city is that if you go 12 months, you're going to kill it, this is the way you want to do it, and we're never going to hear about it again. And what I'm also hearing is that as of tomorrow, in the near future, there is a group of individuals that are ready to get that 5% signatures, and they are going to get their own ordinance, and they're going to put it on the 2020 ballot. And then we have to accept that. So I think as a governing body, we really want to take a look at what it is that we're trying to do here tonight because that's another ultimatum. And I want to go back to another time when Mayor Browning was here at the council, and in 2014, the folks sat here with their signatures to change the city charter. He knew exactly what was going to happen. And this is what I'm hearing. So I just want to make that, that's my statement for right now, and I'll read back.
Councilmember Scherzer?
I want to mirror, Councilman Ostache's, I think 12 months is way too long. I think we've taken a while. And I've asked several times for this to be, to move forward with it. I think six months, tops. There's, we have a sister city, if you want to call it, but a city to the north of us who has made some progress. They have adopted ordinances. So something's working there. And to my understanding, they mirrored their ordinance very closely to the statute. So I think, too, I'm not comfortable with a year. And with the clause that we are going to opt in, or however you just presented that... That's all I'm saying.
All right. The others? Councilmember Moore?
Keep in mind, the 12 months is the extreme. That means 180 days from now, we can come back together. We can come back together in four months. The period is just with the sunset rule that you have 12 months. We don't have to take the whole 12 months, but we need to start doing some progress. We need to start moving forward. Understanding, I understand all about that 12 months is too long for some of you. So if we do it, if we can get it done, it's the faster we start it, and I shouldn't say it that way, but we need to start somewhere. And this is a start. Now, 12 months is the long term. I wasn't looking at going 12 months. I wasn't. If I brought this motion up now, I don't have a problem with bringing it back up when we get some stuff that's concrete on paper. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Moore? I mean, Milne? I just...
I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Milne.
Mayor Clark, I'd like to move the question. We've all have an initial crack at this, and I think it's clear what our purpose is tonight.
Is there a second that would close the debate? Or is there more debate desired?
Second.
It has been seconded to close the debate. Is there any discussion on the motion to close the debate? None? All right. All in favor of closing debate?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So Councilman, Madam Clerk, if you could read the motion.
I have the motion requesting city staff to prepare an opt-out ordinance relating to adult-use marijuana facilities with a one-year sunset provision to give management an opportunity to prepare information for local regulations.
Has everyone heard the motion? Any misunderstanding? Okay. All in favor of the motion as stated by the clerk?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
No.
Councilmember Milne?
Yea.
Councilmember Balls?
I'm sorry, were we voting to close the debate or voting for the motion right now?
The motion.
The base been closed.
The motion.
For the motion to do...
To do the 12-month delay.
Out to 12 months.
Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache? Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
No.
Bench is absent. Mayor Protam Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Clark?
I am going to vote yes.
Five yes and three no's?
Now, with that having been done, is there any additional motions?
As I was just speaking a little while ago, I would like to make a motion that the City of Saginaw start to instruct our city staff to create an ordinance for medical marijuana within the City of Saginaw based on the state Michigan's laws we have now.
There has been a motion made. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the new motion?
What's the motion? I didn't hear.
All right, go ahead. Council Madam Clerk, please read it back.
For staff to...
Begin preparation.
To begin preparation for a...
City ordinance.
City, thank you, because I didn't get it fast enough.
For medical marijuana within the City of Saginaw.
For medical marijuana?
For medical marijuana.
Medical?
Yep.
Medical marijuana facilities.
Medical marijuana, yes, medical marijuana facilities, provisioning centers.
Only provisioning centers?
Vote.
Think about this a little bit more.
Could I interject here? So I guess, I guess I would be having some, a little bit of confusion with, with both motions. The initial motion, are you directing, so you're directing me, because I'm your staff member, you want me to have an ordinance drafted to opt out for 12 months on the first one that passed?
Yes, with the 12-month sunset.
But to begin working on the documents for you to consider, is that...
As I understand the motion, correct me if I'm wrong.
Just for medical.
The motion has been to direct staff to begin preparing opt-in ordinance for medical marijuana. Is that correct?
That is correct. So I guess, okay.
Continue.
Different, different... Well, we talked about it earlier, and if we had our medical in place, it would be a lot easier for us also to opt, to create our recreational later as the state goes through the process. Amy?
I don't know if that necessarily holds true since the laws and rules are different.
Okay, because that's kind of how I was understanding, so I could change my motion or amend it.
Or restate it if you choose. But it's up to you. But we do need to, is there, the motion as it stands...
Because we just, we just did a motion to opt out of recreational, so we can't really put that back on the table.
Well, the question is, were you planning on directing staff to begin ordinance for purposes of opting in for recreational versus medical? That was where I think the confusion arose.
No, just for medical.
That's okay. Is there a second for that motion? It has been seconded.
That don't make any sense.
Well, but that's the motion. Motion is in front.
No, I'm not...
It has been, is there discussion on the motion to opt in, or not to opt in, to direct staff to begin preparing the required paperwork for opting in for medical marijuana?
I have a question for Amy.
Yes, lady.
And anybody else that can answer it for me, but preferably our attorney. The medical marijuana, when the time came, we did nothing. So that meant that we were neutral.
You never opted in.
We never opted in.
Or out.
So now I guess the question is, I know the motion is on the floor, that we start making preparations to allow it. Do we even have to do all of that? I mean, if people want to apply for medical marijuana?
Oh, no, there's zoning ordinances and licensing ordinances that's established first.
Okay, so, okay, okay, I'm just, I just want to get clarification, okay? So, thank you.
I should point out, everyone needs to understand, there's a difference between medical and recreational in how they develop in a community. Medical, you have to opt in by an actual motion for an ordinance to opt in. Recreational is the opposite. You have to have an ordinance to opt out. They are very different in that respect. We have chosen at the moment to have a one-year moratorium essentially.
Up to one year.
Yeah, that's fine. We have a motion on the table to opt in on medical marijuana, or to not opt in, to actually get things prepared to decide whether to opt in. Because this is, the motion was to direct staff to prepare the ordinances, the documents necessary to opt in, correct? All right. So that's the motion in front. Is there any discussion on the motion to direct staff to prepare the documents for purposes or that would allow us to opt in for medical marijuana? Councilman? Jamie, for... Councilmember Forbes?
Okay. Just as we've heard from our speakers tonight, I think there's a lot of economic benefits that can come from opting in to medical marijuana. I think that this is a, this would be a great combination in, based on what we've just decided that Mayor Protam Moore suggested. Hopefully, we won't need to take a year to learn more about how things will play out on the recreational side, but I think that we are further down that road by many years at this point regarding medical, and I think that this would be a great step for us to take as a city.
All right. Councilmember Milne?
At this point, I think that is not the best use of our staff's time. The medical marijuana boat has sailed already. We would be coming in on the tail end of what no one is concentrating on now. It is expected that the adult recreational use marijuana will swamp the medical use marijuana, both in terms of production, sales, and need. So I wasn't here when we did nothing and essentially opted out on that. But in this case, we would be changing what is a position that doesn't need to change right now. All the focus is on figuring out the recreational, and I think that's where we need to spend our time, is finding the facts out and getting the information from the state when they do that. The state is not even concentrating on medical right now. So much of what was in the law changed the previous law, and that's the only place anyone's looking at. What did it change about medical? It is also expected that medical marijuana production is likeliest to move offshore because it's cheaper. It's not a growth area. In both areas, I think people are chasing a boomtown effect. Somewhere between three and five years, it's going to look like it's a good idea. But if it does ever change at the federal level, Michigan is not where it's going to be a boom. Everything here has to be indoor facilities. There's 10 different states that have better outdoor possibilities, so I'm not interested in seeing us chase a boom. I want something that's sustainable.
Councilmember Ross has?
And that's why I kind of brought up this motion, because with the medical side, it could be a lead-in to the recreational side. Because you're right, they have to grow it indoors. And so where are those indoor facilities going to come from? We have a lot of vacant property here in this city. And I know people in Bay City right now that own, just they own warehouses, they're already being approached for the recreational side. So there again, our local contractors, jobs, attorneys, HVAC systems, electricians, and we have a lot, we have a lot of vacant property. You talk to our citizens, we have blight, and it's all under control. There's air systems that have to be used. And so that's why I made this motion. It's like, if we could put this train in motion and get these things laid out, we could be way far ahead when we have to revisit this. And I mean, our citizens have spoken, I know we want to do what's best for the city, but it's out there, it's legal. And in this way, we can actually get it into the system where it's tracked by the state of Michigan. Every plant, everything has to go through the system, whether it's destroyed or what's happening. But at least we get our arms around it here locally, and we have a vision, and we have a voice, and we have a voice of our citizens that are sitting here tonight, too. And I know we haven't shared the statistics from the online survey that we all just took, but they're sitting here right in front of us tonight, and nobody said anything about them on the recreational side. And so it was even more than what they voted in in November of 2018. So I, this is a conversation that I didn't expect to have it tonight, but kind of the way that things went, I think is what we should do. Because you have citizens right here in the city that are traveling to Bay City and outside for their purposes. And so why not make it easier for them to get it right here? And I understand the state's revenue system for medical is now gone under the recreational, and you've got to keep this two things straight, or you're going to get it mixed up. It's rec and medical. But it creates another industry, something that we could benefit from, especially with an income tax inside the city limits. And I know cannabis is scary, and it scares everybody. Well, damn it, so did legal, so did marriage equality. But you know what? When we jumped over that fence, nothing happened. So you got to get over that fear. I don't think it's going to be any different. I know a ton of people in Bay City, I talk to them all the time, I know they're commissioners. It was scary for them, too. But sometimes you just need to take a leap. You need to move forward and not be afraid to make a decision.
Any other...
I'd like to call for a vote.
All right, so called for a vote. The...
Can you stay there?
I'm going to have the clerk restate, you restate the motion, please.
To direct staff to begin working on preparations for an opt-in city ordinance for medical marijuana facilities.
Everyone hear the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Any, well, let's have a roll call, Madam Clerk. Be better.
Councilmember Milne?
Nay.
Councilmember Balls?
Yea.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
No.
Bench is absent. Mayor Protam Moore?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No.
I think four to four votes.
And the motion fails for...
Yes.
All right. Are there any other...
Did the motion fail?
Yes.
Four to four times.
For a tie vote, it fails.
Are there any other motions for miscellaneous business to come? Any other, any other miscellaneous business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then moved, is there a second? It's seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.